Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 10, 2014 Board of Education meeting. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I want to ask if someone will make a motion to add a brief item under Executive Session, 13.2 update on a discipline issue. Would somebody make that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And again, with the Board's consent, I'd like to juggle around, I think, the schedule of items on the agenda a little bit. I mean, first, Mr. Fessel is here and we want to hear from him. Well, actually, why don't we do that now? Mr. Fessel, are you prepared to give us your annual update? All right, well, why don't you join us? And then, just to let you know, I think we'd then go to the Cox PTO issue. Anytime anybody has a gift to the district of over $100,000, I sort of feel compelled that we ought to get them out of here quickly so they can go back to the playground.
Fundraising.
Yeah, fundraising. And Mr. Balistraci and Mr. Gammerman are here, so we'll try to turn to them as well as soon as we can. Mr. Fessel, welcome. It's been a while since we've had you here, but always happy to get your update on issues relating to veterans.
I've been around town for 61 years. It's a great town to live in. I grew up in New Haven, about 12 years. I spent 10 years in Madison, and I learned the best with a lot of good people along the way. The teachers and educators in my book are heroes just as much as the Marines or an aviator or somebody through the Atlantic Ocean, because I didn't realize what they had to go through. I had a son who was a teacher for three years, and he went to the Navy. And he's been there, it was 28 and a half years as a captain. He went to all the militaries you could think of, the three combat campaigns, Yugoslavia, over in the Middle East. And I don't want to go and talk about him. I want to, I'm here today about the veterans, my buddies, my brothers and sisters, especially the ones who departed from this town in the last two, three years. I really miss them, believe me. I did a lot of activities with them, sports in town here, and fire departments, and the police department, the crossing guard gang. And, believe me, those kids you have out there are great. You do a great job by them. And in my book, that's great. I wanted to say something about the people I represent. Ed Carney, the commander of our Legion in Connecticut, and his wife Julie is the commander of the women in Guilford. Terrific people. Kazi Martones, our Legion commander, a great guy. He does a great job by us guys. And of course, Santa Maria, he does a wonderful job. And I want to say, a few weeks ago, I recovered from a bad battle with a heart attack, and I recovered, and I'm doing really fine now. My wife had illnesses too, she had a hard time. And the people of Guilford, it seemed like the whole town was down there trying to help us out. And I tell you, I was overwhelmed. And I tried to be a good neighbor, and the guys, 800 guys that, they got cars put on the lawn, the living veterans in Guilford. And I thought that was a very nice gesture, Mr. Hennigson. And he's a Vietnam guy. By the way, that's one war these guys, they did the level best, and they did a great job, and they weren't treated well, as you probably know. And I think there's a lot of ways we can make it up to them. And my war, World War II, there's only a few of us guys left. I was told by a few people that one of the guys died standing. I wasn't too overwhelmed. But I'll be honest with you, I did my best to try to do great. I did very well in sports in Madison, football, baseball, basketball. And I made a lot of friends with Guilford, not as many as we used to play against each other. Deb Cox, who's a great guy in those days, great superintendent, he ran the State Guard, Company 85th Battalion. And we had a lot of military stuff in that. We guarded Connecticut. I asked him one day, what are you guarding against? He says, oh, these guys are submarines out there, may come in there and try and bomb us or something, you know? So I saw his point. And that training helped me immensely when I got into the real Army, immensely. I want to say, the high school project, we're 100% behind in the veterans. We think it's great for Guilford, it could be utilized in so many ways. And it's a credit to you people, I know how hardworking time you put in. I watch this all the time on TV, you know? And I get the message. And I want to say that we do many things. We sell poppies, we visit the VA hospital, we took part in the Little League, go through the Little League, I wasn't there forever. The color guards ceremonies at our funerals, the flagpole ceremony down at Satrum's, headed by Eddie Mazzi. And we, my son told me how in Washington, they give free rides, airline people, they donate their pilots. They fly in contingents from all over the country to see the statues. And he says, a wonderful thing to see, how they get treated. He says, when the band, when the guys come in from the southern states, they play Dixie, and they have a big celebration, and everybody has a ball, and they go around and visit, they all, you know, it's a big reunion. And when they come in from the north, they play Ekydoodle Dandy, and they have a great time, a real great time. And he's doing a great job with this employment stuff, with his organization, applaud his support for the Guard Reserve. They do, they have a beautiful system, and I give Mr. Freeman a few papers on how they do. And they're doing a great job. They have 23 members up in Hartford working for the veterans. The main job is to get employment, get them on their feet, get them in education. And my son's not a politician, but he's been invited to be one. And he's been retired a few years back. And they like him, and of course, we love him. My family's really proud of him and what he's done for the country. And the state of Louisiana gave my wife a beautiful, beautiful plaque with the Marine Hoist and the banner of Iwo Jima. And she, without her, I wouldn't have been, I'd never come out to anything. She did terrific. She's very quiet, behind the scenes, but she's got a lot for the church. And she made these clouds, the keys to the liver clouds that she used to make out there when I was the crossing guard. And I'm so happy she's coming along, she's got a way to go with her illness. And I just want to read this thing about the veterans. I think it really, really tells it all. There's a poem, "A Veteran Died Today. He was getting older, poachy, and the hair was falling fast, and he sat around at VFW telling stories of the past, of the war that he had fought in, and the deeds that he had done, and his exploits with his buddies. They were heroes, every one. And too sometimes to his neighbors, his tales became a joke, and all his buddies listened for they knew where he spoke. But we'll hear his tales no longer, for old Bob has passed away, and the world's a little poorer, for a veteran died today. Though he won't be mourned by many, just his children and his wife, for he lived an ordinary, very quiet sort of life. He held a job and raised a family quietly going on his way, and the world won't know his passing, for a veteran died today. When politicians leave this earth, their bodies lie in state, while thousands note their passing and proclaim that they were great. Papers tell their life stories from the time that they were young, but the passing of a veteran goes unnoticed and unsung. In the greatest contribution to the welfare of our land, someone who speaks his promise and his fellow man. Or the ordinary fellow who, in times of war and strife, goes off to serve his country and offers up his life. The politician's cyphen and the style in which he lives, and sometimes disproportionate the service he gives. While the ordinary veteran who offered his all is paid off with a medal and perhaps a pension. It's the last to forget, and for it was so long ago that Bob's and Jim's and Mary's went to battle, but he know, if not for the politicians with their compromised employees, it would for the freedom that our country now enjoys." And would you find yourself in danger with your enemies in hand? Would you really want some cop out with his waffling stand? Would he want a veteran who was sworn to defend his home, his kin and country, and would fight until the end? He was just a common veteran, and his ranks are growing short, but his presence should remind us, he may need us likes again. For when countries are in conflict, then we find the veteran's part, is to clear up all the troubles that the politicians start. If we cannot win honor while he's here to hear the praise, then at least let's give him homage at the ending of his days. Perhaps just a simple headline in the paper that might say, "Our Country Is Mourning For A Veteran Died Today." And I thought this was a really beautiful piece at my son's retirement. I thought it fit all the people who served the country, and I think it's a beautiful piece, I want to share this with you. Our kind of heavenly Father, today we gather as friends and family to celebrate this retirement of Captain Theodore Frederick Fessel, Jr., from the United States Navy. Today we honor sacrifice and want to thank you for Ted's sacrifice over the past 28 years and eight months. Ted stood watch for 13 years at sea while the nation watched as the storm clouds of war formed on the horizon. We all slept slowly knowing that Ted and his fellow shipmates were standing watch. Today's the day that we honor not only Ted for his service to our country, but also thank his family for their sacrifices during his Navy career. We thank his wife Kathy, who wore no uniform and was left behind to raise two wonderful sons, Reed and Tristan. Father, she is a patriot who stood on Navy piers and waved goodbye without tears and told her young sons. Her young sons, that their father was a hero, and yet he would come home again. We thank his children Reed and Tristan, his wife, his mom and dad, and others who have lost them, Ted, and have given up so much order for Ted to serve. We thank you for your willingness to stand beside him as he served, for your cup of support and love that enabled him to serve with distinction. Father, we thank you for the unconditional love that made him the man he is. We thank you for parents and grandparents who started him on his journey, that helped inform him to be the kind of man worthy of honor. Heavenly Father, we also pay tribute today to all men and women of the uniformed services who willingly stand up for freedom and sacrifice for this great country. We thank you for blessing this country in the men and women who served, and may they know how thankful we are to be protected and kept safe by them. Finally, heavenly Father, we ask that you bless all the speakers today and bless the meal before us, that it brings strength and nourishment to our bodies. I leave this prayer with you most humbly in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. I want to thank that doctor at the VA for giving me a tremendous lift a couple weeks ago. I had my final bill of health, I was overwhelmed, but the work she did on me, she got me back 100%. Her name is Suzie Langman, and she's one of the head doctors out there. I know the VA's been on the fire for what happened out west, but the West Haven VA's been, done a tremendous job over the years. They've had their dumps in the road, bumps in the road, and they come back fine. And they gave me a little honor when I went in the last time, and she told me, I just, she gave me credit for 75 years of public service, especially to the kids. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you very much for your time, and I wish you all the best of the year.
We thank you, Mr. Fessel. Thank you for coming.
Well, and not only for coming, but also for your service. I think all of us here know that the reason that we have, that we have the liberty to read and write and worship and work is because of people like you who served with distinction, with honor. And we, I think, on the Board of Education, are committed to making sure that children understand exactly what people in your position in World War II, in Korean conflict, in the Vietnam War, in Iraq and Afghanistan did in order to make sure that we have those freedoms. So, on behalf of, really, the entire Guilford Public School community, I want to thank you and thank all of the veterans that have led us to be able to be here today.
I want to thank all my neighbors for what they did for me too, beside my family, of course, and you people. And I don't know how to say how I felt when those people come up to me, the veterans come up to me, and they hug me. Really? I can't remember a time in my life where I fell apart like I did. But when they came up to me and they hugged me, and they left me feeling that I was the guy that needed help, you know? And it just, it overwhelmed me. And anybody out there that can help them, I'll believe you, help those guys out. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fessel.
We wish your wife well, too.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I know she does too. I, I, I'm sorry, I apologize to her for not giving her more credit, but come on, whoever you. But I answered to her just like I answered to my son and all the rest of us.
You're a very wise person.
She's Italian-American, and I'm German-American. The Civil War, we had 13 festivals on the Union side and three on the Southern. So, tough things never change.
Bottom line is always listen to the commander.
Seems to be working, regardless. So, well, I wonder, now, Mr. Gammerman and Mr. Balistraci are here to talk about, or some questions about relating to the question about Veterans Day and what we should do about it as a school district. Gentlemen, do you want to come up now? And we're thematically in the veterans issue anyway, so it seems like maybe we ought to just... Sorry about the, if the Cox School folks can just be patient for a moment. So, the question or the issue is, is the district's observance of Veterans Day, and I know there was an article in one of the papers about what, whether we should do something different moving forward. I don't think the proposal is to do anything different in 2015, at least in the draft of calendar that Dr. Freeman presented to us last year has status quo, which is for the schools to be closed in observance of the holiday, obviously tomorrow, but then in November 11, 2015. But I think Dr. Freeman's suggestion was that we at least have some dialogue and to see what the community's interest is and what really ought to be the effort moving forward. And I gather, gentlemen, you've got some thoughts about that.
We have, actually, I'm about the only person in the adult room who's going to school tomorrow. I'm going to school at Old Lime, been invited at school, it'll be the fourth year that I'll be going there. And that's, the start of that, four years ago, got me thinking about this, and conversations with various teachers, administrators, and board members on the shoreline have only fueled this. When I go to Old Lime, there's a different kind of activity that happens. This is Old Lime Consolidated, I've been in the other schools there as well, but I have two compelling reasons to be at the Consolidated. One sits in the second grade and the other sits in the fifth grade, and they're my grandchildren. And they will have, they have invited, each, each one of these children is allowed to invite a veteran to the school. They come, in some cases, they all sit on the stage with the children at the foot of the veteran. The children introduce the veteran, the veteran makes a comment on what they served in. I've seen veterans there, I was a veteran of the Korean War, but we've seen veterans there from going back to some Pearl Harbor survivors, all the way to young men who have come back from Afghanistan. It's a compelling kind of day. This, the assembly was only part of it, on various points of the day, and I think Carl's going to be speaking to that in a moment too, because of an article that he showed, shared with me from the Hartford Current. At some point, there will be music, there will be poetry, there will be original artwork, there will be little playlists that the children will present. And in all cases, I have heard at least four educators, I won't quote anyone that may or may not be here, as saying it was the most valuable teaching day of the year. And this is a comment not from the kids, but from the administrators and the teachers. It is that important today, and I believe the trend is moving toward, now I believe we're over 40%, getting over to 50% of the schools in Connecticut, school districts in Connecticut, that actually have school on Veterans Day. This, this experience was over three years ago that started. About three months ago, my wife and I went to France, and I'm an old history teacher, so we went to the battlegrounds. And there's no more compelling images that you have than the cemetery at Normandy, a piece of American soil in France. And then we gravitated eastward through France, through De Meuse, through the Aragon, all the way over to Ypres in Belgium, where there were other cemeteries, perhaps not as impressive. These are the dead, but there are so many living that have to be celebrated for what they have contributed to our country, that it's not for the old, it's for the very young that we should try to preserve and turn this holiday into an important learning experience for our children.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Carl Balistraci, and thank you for having us tonight. It's been a long time since I've spoken to the Board of Ed, but it's under happy circumstances tonight. I first started talking to Dr. Freeman about this, I don't know, maybe a year ago or something, and this is an issue. There's not 100% support from the veterans, and part of that is because we tried this once before, but it was without the real leadership and direction of the superintendent or the Board of Ed, that we dedicate this day in schools to issues of veterans, issues of American history, issues of the conflicts that we have been in throughout our history. But we, that's the difference now. We have, we have that leadership, and I think that this is a teaching moment. The article in the Hartford Current this Sunday was about Windsor, Connecticut, and all six of their schools have activities, from elementary to high school, age appropriate. I know just a few years ago, we had a reading day at Cox, and it, they chose to, it was around Veterans Day, and they chose to invite all veterans to come. And we had a serving member of the SEALs, we had a woman who had served in Afghanistan, we had our chief of police, who was a veteran, we had a lot of people who came and read to the students, and we, we read some interesting stories. I chose a book about the candy bomber in the Berlin airlift, who ended up dropping candy to the German children, excuse me, each time he flew into Berlin with coal or food. It really is and was and will be a teaching moment if we can have activities like this in the schools, instead of just giving the kids another day off. And they, they don't really understand why, they don't, they don't study about this, they don't learn about this. Maybe they do from their grandfathers or from uncles or parents, if their parents are veterans, but I think it's so important that we, we have this as a school day and that we dedicate some part of the day in each of our buildings to some kind of activity that would highlight our American history, our different conflicts that we've been in, why we got involved. I know, you know, this year, we're beginning to talk about World War I. Tomorrow night, Penny Colby will have a special presentation at the library on the First World War. There are so many stories about Guilford men and women. It was the first war that women from Guilford served in the uniform. But one of the great stories is about Walter Bishop, who went to France, served, was gassed, survived, came home, and he started a world peace movement. I mean, he actually conferred with the leaders of European nations. He actually wrote to people like Albert Einstein and got a reply. And he tried his best to start a world peace movement because the League of Nations was going down. But this was just one man, but he was a Guilford man, he was a chicken farmer, and he was very successful. These are stories that we should share with our children, not just anti-war stories or the horrors of war, but about the leadership that comes out of these situations, that our men and women continue their lives after experiencing these terrible things and do wonderful things. I just want to share one story with you, because when I was here at the high school as an administrator, I started to interview some of the faculty that had served, and I asked my old history teacher, who I know dropped into Normandy the night before the invasion to work with the French underground, if I could interview him, and he said, oh, you don't want to talk to me, you want to talk to Mr. Cunningham. Now, Mr. David Cunningham was a history teacher here. I used to call him Bulldog, because he was short, he had a stubbed nose, and he was kind of grumpy most of the time. But I went to him and asked if he would sit with me and do an interview, and he said, no, I never talk about war. He says, I don't tell war stories. He said, I, I never have and I'm not. And I said, okay, I respected that, and I went back. But I had been told that he was in the first wave ashore at Omaha Beach, in the Navy, but with the infantry. Three weeks later, he came into my office and he said that I changed my mind. He said, I'll talk to you. So I went down to his house, just south of Calvin Lee School, and for an hour and a half, I just asked him a couple questions, and he just went on and on and on. And he agreed to allow me to tape it. Ten, ten or so years later, he had passed away, and I had his grandson at Baldwin. There was one particular teacher he just, the grandson couldn't get along with, so he ended up in my office every day at that period. But the kid was a real genius at computers, and I finally came up with the idea that I would have this young man transpose his grandfather's tape into a hard copy on a computer, which he did. And after that was completed, about a month and a half it took, I made copies, and I said, bring this home to your mom. I don't even think it was the next day, I got a phone call, and she was absolutely sobbing. Her father had never, never talked about the war. And this was a man who only survived because he hid between the dead bodies for eight hours while the German machine guns raked the beach. But we have this wonderful tape now. His mother has it, his aunts and uncles have it, and he has it, that he can share now with his sons and daughters. So it's important, I think, that we honor veterans, that we use this teaching moment, that we get kids involved with maybe doing projects like this, and I would hope that in the dialogue that you're going to have in the future, you would discuss these possibilities, because I think they're very real and very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. Since going over to Lime tomorrow, I'd be happy to have anyone on the board join me as a guest, any one, two, or three of you. We could go over there and you can see it for yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, a question. In Lime or in the 40% of the other schools called that you were talking about, what percentage of the school day was devoted to veterans affairs and what percentage was devoted to regular academic work?
I know that in Lime, it's the whole day, in the younger grades. In the older grades, it's less. It tends to be more of an assembly, one hour perhaps, but in the middle grades and absolutely in the elementary grades, it's the whole day, different activities. But that's Lime, I don't know about the other.
In Windsor, as I said, all six schools have activities going on, but it's not the full day. The high school band actually has a parade that goes down, and the public is invited to the green, and then they sing patriotic songs, they read poetry, they do a few things, and then they go back to school. Our Lady of Mercy tomorrow, after we have the veterans' assembly on the green, I think, well, that's at 11:00, and I think at 1:00, the veterans are going over to Our Lady of Mercy, and they're going to have like an hour program over there. When we did the reading at Cox, it was maybe one period, but all of the classes in one grade participated. So it doesn't have to be the full day, but, you know, the, it, when you think of World War I, the poetry that came out of that war, the, even, there's even a book of dark cartoons, very similar to Upfront, that was done in World War II by the American cartoonist about Willie and Joe. I mean, there's just so many things, there's so many songs and poetry and stories, all quiet on the Western Front. I mean, you could just go on and on and on with examples of, you know, different ways that different class- that different classes could participate, but it doesn't have to be a full day.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I received a communication about this topic that I was asked to pass along. Larry Santa Maria called me, and most of you know Larry, he's the commander of the VFW post here in town. Larry told me that it is the official position of the VFW that they like the calendar the way it is and like to have school closed on Veterans Day. They feel that's the best way to honor the day. And he told me that the American Legion also took a vote and came to the same conclusion.
The local?
Yes, yes. I discussed with him the teaching moment and all the beautiful stories and patriotism through song and all the things that can be done on that day, and he said, "Of course, those things should be done, but not on that day." So I was asked to share that with everyone.
Okay. I mean, again, we are not, clearly, this has nothing to do with 2014 or 2015, and we can certainly, and I don't think the superintendent is not making a recommendation at this point one way or the other, nor is the calendar committee. So I think we've got lots of time to be very thoughtful about this. The Hartford Current editorialized actually about it today. And just to give people some history, until 1995, it was a mandatory school holiday in Connecticut. In 1995, the state made it optional. Guilford, at some point, I think in the late 90s, went to having classes on Veterans Day. Then, I want to say in around 2003, I'm starting to think everything is about 10 years ago, I don't know if it's just...
It's more than 10, I believe.
It could be, it was somewhere in there. It was since I was on the board, I remember that. And the board did vote affirmatively to make it a holiday, because in substantial part on the position of the VFW and the American Legion, and based on a little bit of a spotty experience, frankly, with the programs, I'm sure you know that. And now, it doesn't have to be that way, right? The programs can be very compelling, but they have to be, they have to be very compelling. They have to be, it has to be thought through and planned, and so, in any event, I think we've got lots of time to gather input, see what the official positions are of various stakeholders and people that are interested. I mean, the one thing, this is one of those issues, I think probably, there's unanimity that we need to honor veterans for everything they've done. That's not the issue. The issue is how best to do that in this context, and so I think that's what we'll continue to talk about moving forward.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, it wasn't Dr. Freeman that came to us and said, you know, "Will you do this?" We went to him and asked, so we need to have dialogue, and it is an issue. I mean, the vote at the American Legion was eight to seven against, 15 members, you know, there's 800 veterans in Guilford, so...
Well, we will do, we will do the right thing in terms of, in terms of listening to everybody. I don't think that, I don't think that a single person on the board has a fixed feeling that we have to do one or the other right now, we're going to listen to everybody and try to honor veterans the most effective, the right way that we can. But I think, I think I speak for everybody in saying that, but...
Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say, I get at least one call or one person every month who says, "What are they going to do with the class shields?" And then, "What are they going to do with David Sibley's mural?" And I assure people, we're going to save the class shields, and we're darn well going to save David Sibley's wonderful mural up there that he did when he was a Southmore. So maybe that's worth saying publicly on television, so that people stop calling me.
Thanks, Tom. We're actually working very hard on both, on the Sibley painting in particular is tricky...
It's the greater challenge.
It is the greater challenge, but we are working very hard on it. And actually, there's a plan to preserve the shields in a way that they're actually visible in the lobby, I think. Are we still doing that, or?
Yes.
Not the physical shields, but a electronic form.
We're planning to save them physically, but we're also planning to display them more prominently in a digital, in a digital format, so that we will have them always, but we also want to actually build on the theme of the shields a little more than we have in the past, without putting every single one of them in the front hall.
And one of them, I think Mr. Balastresi would be interested to know, is this a secret? That the, it can't be too much of a secret.
It's not a secret, but it's become more inspired by multiple shields than a representation of any single shield. So we are working on the theme of the shields more formally and officially as our community enters our new school. And so we're working on something that is more permanent and built into the actual entryway of the school, that builds on our history of the shields.
Is there anybody else who has an observation about the Veterans Day issue, about other Veterans Affairs issues more generally? If not, then let's go to 9.1, if we can, which is, the proposal is that the board approve a donation of $101,568 from the A.W. Cox PTO for the installation of playground equipment. I certainly want to invite you forward to talk about that. I asked Dr. Freeman, "Is that a typo in the agenda?" And he assured me that it's not.
To start it off, we have a little film to show you, don't worry, it's not very long, about a minute is in there. It's going to be the flavor of what's going, what's been happening at Cox. So contrary to what the video shows, I did not build the entire PlayStation myself. I'm here with Ali Gavall, our PTO representative, and just wanted to say a few words about our playground. You know, when you think about what a child needs to do to, you know, grow to be a healthy, risk-taking individual, problem solver, you know, they need to be in high places, they need to get that bird's eye view, they need to take risks, or at least perceive that they're taking risks. And they need the experience of feeling as though they're on their own exploring, learning. And our playground does all of that and more. You cannot touch this piece of equipment without exercising in some fashion, and I had the great opportunity to watch from my window often, the kids playing on it, and it's just a joy to watch, because they're getting so much out of the playground. A funny thing happened as they were demoing the old playground, a fellow comes walking up, and he said, "Gee, I, many years ago, I helped build that old playground," and I thought, "Uh-oh, I'm ready for an airfall." But he says, "You know, it was about time that thing was taken down," and I can attest to that, the slivers and upkeep of it, it was beyond its time. So it's great to have this new structure put in place. So our PTO, and Ali was the point person for the PTO, took on the monumental task of designing it, putting it out to other parents to get a look at it, get their input, requesting bids, and then also raising funds, all of the funds for it. And it was all done in less than a year. So I'd like Ali to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank Vince Augustine and Cliff Gurnum, who's not here, but both of them, throughout the whole process, were, they were both extremely helpful. I was, I was new to Guilford about two years ago, and last year, I was asked to take this project on, so I formed a committee, and in about nine months' time, we came up with enough funds to see this project through. We met with multiple manufacturers, came up with, we chose a design, voted on it at a PTO meeting, had a lot of input from the parents at Cox, and the project really came about because I'm a firm believer of healthy lifestyles, and I wanted kids to come together and play and socialize and move, which are all extremely important for physical and cognitive and social development among kids. So when I was asked to do this, I was like, "Yes, okay, we'll do this." So we started fundraising last summer, started off with my kids actually having a lemonade stand in Guilford, raising $144, and I thought, "Okay, $144, not a lot towards $100,000, but it's a start." And then through the year, we had multiple fundraisers with a Zoom-a-thon and a cookbook production and an art auction and a race into spring, a lot of exercise fundraising projects. And we came together and we raised a total of $107,000. $101,568.69 was the cost of the product installation and freight altogether. In total, we had 59 direct donations from families and then sold 64 bricks, which is the latest fundraiser that we've been holding, Buy a Brick Program, to make a, near the playground, a patio. And it's really, it's continuing on, families really came involved, community providers bought bricks, donated money. So it's really a community effort, and we're very proud of the project, and so we're presenting this as a gift, and we, if you get a chance to go by and see the kids playing on it, they're really, truly enjoying it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Is there a motion that we approve this gift in the amount of...
I'll move. And I'll second it.
Any discussion, we may have some other things to say after the vote, but all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, with our, with our deep, deep thanks, this is, this is what makes Guilford great, and hopefully, this is one of the, I don't, I'm not sure you moved here in order to...
For the community.
Yeah, for the community, and...
We like the community here.
And people doing what you've done, and your colleagues on the Cox PTO deserve a great, a high level of gratitude, a deep thanks from all of us and all of the kids, not only this year, and you think about it, that's going to be there for 20, 30 years. And when you think about the number of kids that are going to benefit from that, the number of kids that are going to learn how to play and play with other, with each other and socialize, as you said, and it's a fabulous playground. I don't know if people have seen it, it's really, it's beautiful. That is exemplifies what we can do when we all try to work together, and just very, very thankful, very grateful for your hard work, and we know, we know how much work it was, and it's nice when it comes together.
Thank you.
And it's not too late to buy a brick.
Well, why don't you, if you were a good marketer, you'd send us an email with the link. That worked for the lead project, didn't it? I think she hit us up for a couple of bucks at the meeting, so... And I'm sure Dr. Freeman will prepare a letter for our signatures in a more formal way.
I will be happy to have this one come out for board signature.
Yes. Okay, why don't we try to get back on the agenda, if possible? We'll go back to item three, action on the October 14 and October 27 minutes, those are both full board meetings. So is there a motion to approve, well, let's just do one at a time, is there a motion to approve October 14?
So moved.
Second.
Changes, corrections, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, October 27, a workshop meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes, additions, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ms. Renner, you reviewed the expenditures for the month of October?
I did. The expenditures for the month of October were $6,701,371.46. This amount puts us at 28.27 of our budget compared to 23.85 last year at this time, which is more of a difference than we usually see. About half of that is simply due to the fact that we had, October was a three payroll month. The bi-weekly payroll happened to hit three times. Last year, it didn't happen until November, so comparing October, October, there is a 2%, difference roughly there. But there were also some line items that were up for unanticipated reasons, including the special education tuition for out placements line. We discussed that at great length, and the reason, it does not have to do with the programs that we have worked so hard to create here in the district over the past several years. It's not a matter of students who might attend those programs and are attending out of district. It's simply situations where needs cannot be met here, and it's, it's not many, but they're expensive. And as a result, that line looks like it's going to be over budget for the year. As a result, there is a soft freeze in place for any sort of discretionary spending. Everything that we need will be, will be spent, but things will be scrutinized first. So that's, so that's that. Are there any questions about the October expenditures?
Okay, so it's a motion to approve the expenditures for October?
It is.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Okay. All right, and I think we'll talk, there are a couple of other finance committee issues that I think we want to talk about maybe later. Okay, item five, public forum for topics on the board agenda only, people who haven't already been heard, okay. Six, we've done, seven, student representatives, there is no school today, it is a professional development day.
Today was a professional development day, staff was in school, but the students were not.
So Dr. Freeman gave them the day off, unilaterally, I might add, but... Okay, eight, superintendents report, do you want to tell us what's going on?
Yes, we have a brief report for you this evening. First, I want to remind the public that we have begun the construction of our budget proposal for this school year. The board has met twice on that topic, one, a board meeting that you just, for which you just approved the minutes. The board met with the leadership team within the district, and we talked about priorities as we move into this coming school year and how we will prepare for those. And then we held a public hearing where the board met in session at Adams Middle School. The public was invited to come in and share their concerns or priorities moving forward into this next coming school year, compared to last year's meeting, where full-day kindergarten was a large topic, and we had a very full and active turnout. There was, in fact, a small turnout, a small number of parents who had some specific suggestions that they wanted to make for the board moving forward. We begin meeting with members of the leadership team later this month. We will start compiling budget requests from each of the schools and each of the departments. Those will be compiled into a complete administrative recommendation that we'll deliver to the board, and then we will have further hearings for the community to comment on how we have presented those priorities. So it's only November, but we're well into budget preparation, again, as we move forward. Topics that seem to be drawing attention as we move into this year are continued exploration of the International Baccalaureate Program at the high school with possible application this year. I know that Mr. Masenti has been meeting with student and parent groups and beginning a conversation with the community about that possibility. There has been some continued interest in the idea of school start times. Mr. Bowden and I have been meeting with our transportation company, and we are compiling a series of options or scenarios that we will present to the board early in the budget process, so that we can look at logistical impacts as well as financial impacts of shifting our high school start time to later in the morning. And a continued focus on embedded professional development, instructional support of teachers, and instructional supports for our students as we move forward. So we talked a little bit about the use of instructional coaches in the district, we talked a little bit about administrative support, both around teacher evaluation and around instruction and instructional support. Those seem to be the themes that are developing this year. When we initiated this school year, the communications that went out to our staff as well as our community noted that this was a year where there will be few new initiatives. We're not looking to bring new and sweeping changes into our school district. There have been changes over the last two or three years, and we need to continue the work of understanding, digesting, and really cementing those changes as we move forward. So it's nice to note that we're looking at scheduling, we're looking at continued professional development... development and support, we're looking at continued support around special education, but we are not expecting a year where we have dramatic special educational redesign or where we introduce something as large as full day kindergarten to this board or this community. And we will continue those conversations at these meetings as we move deeper into budget season.
Just the one comment would be that, you know, IB, well, not representing a large monetary commitment at this time, is, I think, at a key point as far as the board figuring out whether we're going to continue to invest in that. And that does have fairly, you know, big impacts, both financially and instructionally down the road. So I think that's an important thing for people to pay attention to, even if it's not a large line item on the budget.
Exactly right. And in fact, I also want, the way that we continue to support the needs of our highest achieving students is also a topic that has been connected. We have Dr. Borland's study that we're conducting now and write, both of those, while they may not have significant impact on budgetary items, are important instructionally and they do deserve a high degree of public scrutiny and deliberation at this level before we determine if we move forward with those or not. Financial investment isn't the only kind of investment that we choose to make and they all need to be scrutinized carefully.
Along the same lines, I think the issue of the start time, the financial and busing parameters are one leg of what I see as a three-legged stool. The others are after-school programs, athletics and so on. So we, as a board, need to hear from that interest group and the coaches and the athletic director. But the other leg of the stool is the community. And I think we need to, as we move through this year, have well-advertised community forums where we listen to what the community says and what their concerns and what their interests are vis a vis start time at the high school.
Agreed. You said nobody else is looking at this in our, in our region.
Nobody wants, in a, when I was at the LEARN, I asked about it and there wasn't in, in our community. Our LEARN goes from Guilford to Stonington, north to East Hampton, and there's, there was no one, there was no pressure to look at it, therefore their boards were not moving forward on it. And there was obviously no pediatricians on their board bringing it forward either.
There might be.
Talking about pediatricians there, Chris forwarded an email to us from a pediatrician who happens to be the medical director of schools of a neighboring town. And I wrote her back asking whether that town has been looking into later start times. And she mentioned that she talked to the superintendent of schools there and that's as far as it went.
There's, that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of problems there's, that can result of this, but I don't think it's anything that we should shy away from because of that. And we should investigate and do the best by our students. But we're not going to see cooperation from a lot of schools in the air, in the shoreline.
I like being a leader instead of...
Nothing wrong with being a leader.
Just have to be careful about how things get pieced together.
Yeah, oh yeah. That's why I said it's a three-legged stool.
Yeah. To Dr. Moore's point about IB, I just wanted to make two observations. One is East Hartford, who I think has, has a high school IB program now, they actually have just, I saw that they have implemented now a K to 12 IB program, which is sort of interesting. I don't, I don't know anything more about it other than they did it or they're planning on doing it for next fall.
Sure. IB is generally assumed to be a high school level program, but IB does in fact have middle level programming and elementary programming, both of which are much more common overseas than they are in the States.
And there, and the other thing I wanted to say about IB specifically is without stating the obvious, overstating the obvious, there are three possibilities. One is we decide not to go forward with it, period. The other is to keep going down this road at the present pace. And the third is to take a breath and maybe we take a year and, and say, well, look, we need to find some more about it and whatever. I mean, that's an alternative that's available to us. This is not something that expires. This is not like the grant for the, for the high school that was going down from 30% to 20% on June 30th. So, you know, we may say, there are a lot, there are a lot of possibilities that are, that are available to us and I think we deserve, the community deserves our, our looking at it very thoughtfully without any kind of preconceptions or without, and, and I think our general approach to these kinds of issues is to, is to not feel rushed, not to try to do things, particularly when, when community involvement is really at its very early stages right now. If we don't feel like we've had enough community involvement, let's maybe take a breath. But anyway, that's not today's issue, but...
I spent quite a bit of time last week with a fellow grandmother whose grandchildren go to East Hartford's IB program.
Oh, really?
And she spoke very enthusiastically about it enough so that I'm, I'm arranging to go and visit. She's going to take me up to the school and show me.
It's also worth noting for the community that your next meeting, scheduled for November 24th, has an agenda that is dedicated to International Baccalaureate Program. And we will be hosting a guest speaker who is in fact the president of DePaul University. A number of the questions that we have surfaced around this have to do with how colleges and college admittance offices view IB, particularly view IB in light of AP. We have a very strong AP program here of which we're very proud. And the, the entire agenda is committed to that conversation on November 27th, uh, sorry, November 24th.
And is that here?
It is not here. It is an off-site meeting and we will make sure that we advertise that meeting. We'll send a, a message out through school messenger off the top of my head.
Calvin Lee.
Thank you very much. It is at Calvin Lee.
Okay. All right. And that's obviously open to any member of the community?
Yep. Open to the public. It's a workshop meeting. There is no general space for public comment on your workshop agenda, although I know that Chairman Blas has at times been wanting to allow community members to, to comment, even at workshop meetings.
It happens. Okay. Anything else on that? Do, eight point two is an update on the, on Dr. Borland's study. Is that, have you already touched on that as much as you're going to?
Yeah, only, only to remind the community that Dr. Borland will be rejoining us on December 4th and 5th. And on December 4th, which is a Thursday evening, he will be meeting here in this room at the high school in a meeting that is open to any community members. Dr. Borland is reviewing the way that we support our highest achieving students in the district and will be hosting a meeting with any community members who would like to share comments, questions, or feedback on that topic. He'll be meeting those parents here. He also has additional meetings for you, Board of Education members, that have been shared with you. And he will be meeting with more student groups, including student groups from both Adams and Baldwin, to discuss their experiences in the school system, as well as some other constituent groups. And two special meetings that are cross constituency, one that is being built to talk about the AP and IB opportunities, the AP program and possible IB opportunities at the high school, and one to focus on the vertical articulation of our math curriculum in the district with particular attention paid to grades seven through the high school. We're looking forward to his return visit and then to his comments following that visit. We expect to have a, at least a preliminary report from Dr. Borland before the new year.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Eight point three is, is an agenda item we asked you to illuminate us on, and that is every time we pick up the paper, it seems like there is a ranking of the district and they don't always seem to be...
The same.
Or even consistent. And so I think it was, it would be helpful if we had some understanding, since people do talk, I mean, I, this is actually something I get stopped about in Big Y or the Food Center or Bishop's, just to do an equal plug to...
Spread it around.
You know, how come, how come you're, how come you're top whatever in this one and you're something else on that one and you didn't even seem to make the list in the third one and what, what's going on? And so what would you like to tell us about this?
I'm going to invite Dr. Keen to help, but I think the best analogy would be the Golden Globes and the Oscars. And they don't always come up with the same conclusion. We have looked at a number of the groups that have ranked us recently. We have looked into what criteria they use to establish those rankings. And essentially, the best thing that we can tell you is that it's apples and carbureators. Different organizations use different criteria and come to different conclusions. So Dr. Keen and Mr. Masenti spent some time compiling the list of the four recent rankings that have been discussed in the community. I'm going to ask Dr. Keen to be more detailed than I in my assessment of this and then we're happy to entertain questions. But they're using different measures, they're putting them through different formula and they're coming up with different ratings.
So you can see, I've provided a small chart for you. Two national rankings, one from Newsweek and one from U.S. News and World Report. These are certainly not new. They, they are, they're an annual publication where they rank schools and they have state editions and if, and when you go online, you can look at the states. The one from Newsweek is the one that I think a lot of people had questions about because it was like, we didn't see your name there. Newsweek is one that does a threshold analysis and they collect data from the National Center for Educational Statistics. They choose from that data the top, what they consider the top 20% of the schools around the nation. And then they send packets to schools and ask for them, schools to do a web-based survey and, you know, provide a lot more information. It's almost like who's who. Here, you fill out all this and, you know, we'll put you in our book kind of idea. We did not participate. We did not apply for that ranking. Concan and the Hartford Current are more local.
Can I just, is, is that just because of the amount of time that it would take compared to the return, the benefit? Okay.
Mr. Masenti receives multiple such invitations annually and essentially, we, we don't, we don't take up any of those invitations. Some of those invitations come with application fee, some of those invitations are without application fee. Multiple come across his desk annually and we have not chosen to participate in invitational rankings at this time.
You know, performance-related data is, is important, but if the pool is a self-selecting pool, then it's pretty hard to argue that the data is, data are compelling. And certainly, they're not going to be complete. So, okay, I mean, that makes sense. But that, that is one, actually, I think we all got questions on.
It was invitational and, and at this time, we don't participate in any invitational ratings or rankings.
Okay.
The Concan report is one that certainly is more local and they, they put together what they call a school report card. And where Guilford was ranked number 10, actually, if you look carefully, it's really number 14 because there were a lot of ties along the way. But it is ranked by their overall school performance index, which is collected from statewide assessments, CAPT. And because CAPT, the last official administration of CAPT was 2013, this is based on 2013 reports. So I'm not sure what Concan is going to do for next, their next publication. However, they do have a disclaimer that they will be transferring over to Smarter Balance Assessments.
And how many high schools in the state of Connecticut?
I don't know.
It's about 150 or...
168 districts, some with multiple high schools and some with none. So...
There's some regions.
Yes.
Yeah.
The SPI is also under review at the State Department of Education. Both Dr. Keen and Mr. Augustine said on a committee that the state has pulled together and SPI, this school performance index and the measures that go into that is both relatively new and likely changing in, in the next year or so as we move forward. So while this ranking is based on that number, again, that number is, is under review. It has received a lot of commentary from around the state about, about the reliability of that figure and the measures that go into that figure. And the environment around that number is shifting.
And just to comment on that, what we anticipate is going to happen is that there's going to be a lot more data involved around that index number. Things like, you know, graduation rates and maybe school climate issues.
Chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, chronic absenteeism. There's going to be a lot more data. It's not just going to be test data. Which brings us to the U.S. News and World Report. And a lot of people, I think, saw that last spring where Guilford was, Guilford High School was a silver medalist, number 24 in Connecticut, number 718 in the country, based on U.S. News and World Report. Well, U.S. News and World Report has a three-step process. It's pretty complex. They start with the NCES, the state test results. They also look at enrollment, ethnicity, and other profile data such as graduation rates, college acceptance rates, some of those other things that are reported to the federal government. Then they go to the second step of comparison of underrepresented student groups. Students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, students from minority or students in special programs or, you know, with special needs or English language learners or any other underrepresented group. And they look at seeing how well those students are doing. And then they, they take all of that, if you make it through the second level, and look at college readiness based on AP or IB results. And so that's how U.S. News and World Report does it. And then lastly, the Hartford Current, most recently, just last month, produced an article called What High Schools Have the Highest SAT Scores? Well, this was just their own criteria. They took SAT scores that were published by the College Board and just added them. So they added math and reading and writing and then put them down the list. But they did provide a graph so you could see, you know, how big the writing bar was as compared to the math bar or as compared to the reading bar. There was no really statistical formula. It was just a very simple kind of formula and the ranking is not provided by the College Board. The College Board does not provide anything like that. They do provide, you know, scores to schools. They do have what they call an AP honor roll that they give out when, and we received it three or four years ago. I can't remember exactly how long ago it was, but it was some time ago. But basically, the honor roll is established for schools that greatly increase their number of offerings at, at the same time increasing their performance. So it's this simultaneous kind of piece. And so it doesn't happen that, oh, schools wouldn't get it year after year after year because you're not increasing programs year after year after year. So that kind of gives you a, a sense of, there are a lot, this is not an exhaustive list. These are the ones that I've heard more comments about or have been more publicly noted in our community. If you start going in and looking, a lot of different publications rank, it sells newspapers, it sells magazines, and they all use different criteria. So sometimes you have to dig for the criteria, but to say, okay, you're number 10 on this one, you're number 24 on this one, you're number 16 on this one, they're all accurate based on the criteria that this particular ranking system has chosen to do their rating. But, you know, the public may not understand, you know, the criteria that was involved. So this is just to explain to you where we have fallen in some of these areas and what the criteria were to, to be there. So that, if people do stop you and say, how come I saw you were number 10 and then I heard you were number 24?
Did you drop?
Yes. You should drop. And it was the very same data based on the very same year, but it was using different criteria.
In, in these kinds of studies, are there school districts that traditionally rank higher than us?
Actually, there are some that, you know, I typically look for. I don't study the entire list and, and look at all of them before and all of them after. I usually look for our neighboring towns and to see, okay, are they higher than us? Are they lower than us? Typically, you'll see a lot of the DURG-A schools near the top of list, but that doesn't mean that there aren't plenty that, you know, are further down the list as well. It really depends. If they're looking at how well you're working with underrepresented groups in the criteria, it may be that... it may be that, it may be very, very different group at the top than someone that is just looking for AP scores that are just, or SAT scores that are added up. So it really depends on the criteria to say that, no, this is not the same group always at the top.
In one of these most recent studies, the, in fact, number one ranked high school was a magnet school from Hartford.
Correct.
That came out as the very best school. I think in broadest strokes, the best description of what this communicates to us is delivered by Mr. Blosse, when he identifies how many communities in the state of Connecticut fall above us in DURG B and DURG A, when you look at things like medium income, tax base, and the investment that goes into the school system. And when you compare our performance on almost any one of these measures, against our place in a socioeconomic ladder, we repeatedly outperform our place on that socioeconomic ladder, that we place higher than the demographics would indicate we should be placing if it was demographics alone. And I think that speaks to everything that we heard leading up to this agenda item in this meeting tonight. It speaks to people like Mr. Fessel, and Mr. Balistraci, and Mr. Gammerman, and the Cox PTO, and what this community puts into these schools that goes beyond the ledger book. And, you know, in any one of these, I'm proud of our performance, and it speaks well to what we achieve in the Guilford Public Schools.
Well, but what I'm trying to understand is, in some of these rankings, is the difference, the aptitude of the students, which is something that we can't control. I mean, our student body is our student body, and I would think that some of the DURG A districts are going to beat us on that, on that kind of criteria. Or is it, I mean, is there any correlation between how much, for example, a district is spending on education per pupil and where they are in the rank? I mean, is it because some of these other districts are outspending us? Or is it that they have a student body that is possibly more college-oriented? I mean, I'm trying to understand what the difference is here.
I think it's really difficult to separate DNA to that level. I think that there are so many variables that go into student-school readiness and the value-added proposition that a school district brings to a child who comes from an enriched home compared to one who comes from a less enriched home. It is a brilliant question, and I don't know that anybody has answered it well in the realm of public education yet. If I knew how to answer that, I would write a book and go on a speaking tour.
One of the things I think, when we think about per pupil spending, a lot depends on the needs of the students. So you have to factor in, you know, percentage of students who have free and reduced lunch, or who are in special programs or have special needs. Some of the highest districts with per pupil spending are inner-city schools. They get a lot more grant money, they get a lot more federal support because they have greater needs. And so, just to say per pupil spending is really not as accurate probably as to say, okay, what is the parent tax return, to be honest? That is probably more accurate, you know, looking at individual income than it is per pupil spending in schools, because it does really depend on the needs of students.
One of the, the Yankee Institute actually did a study some number of years ago comparing achievement, or at least purporting to compare achievement, with per pupil spending. And at that time, I, my recollection is, we were 16th in the state in terms of the most efficient district comparing performance to per student spending. Very rough data that they, you know, the formula was very, very unsophisticated. On the other hand, it's all, it's the first time anybody had tried to do it, and so it's, socioeconomic status is a very strong predictor of academic achievement, it is. So, I mean, we are somewhere, we're close actually to the bottom, or at least in the 2000 census. I wonder how it's going to be different in the 2010 census. But we were toward the bottom of the second, the reference group B, you know, we are, I want to say there's eight DURG A schools, reference group A schools, Fairfield County, they're all Fairfield County, Westport, Wilton, Weston, not, what?
Westhorne.
No, they're B.
New Canaan.
New Canaan, Darien, those are, those are the ones you-
Those are the DURG As.
Those are the A's.
Those are the DURG A schools. There's only eight, I think, seven or eight. And then there are about 25, 28, 26 DURG B schools in the low 20s, somewhere in the, maybe the mid 20s, 23, something like that. We're toward the tail end of that group, actually, just purely from socioeconomic status. Greenwich, for example, is a B. Fairfield is a B. Ridgefield is a B, I think, or an A. Newtown is a B for sure. So it's, we're in the, we're in the same pool as some pretty substantial towns socioeconomically. I think Dr. Freeman's point is that we are, when we get a ranking like Concan, just to pick one, we are outperforming virtually every other DURG B school. Now, interestingly, Madison also performs very well in the Concan report. There, I think Guilford and, I think this is right, Guilford and Madison are the only DURG B schools in the top 10 in the Connecticut. And Concan is Connecticut Coalition for Achievement now, it's a state group. But then, U.S. News has Madison 33rd on their high school ranking, and so it's a little, it's a little hard to figure out, frankly, how it is that criteria are applied the way they're applied. And one of the criteria in the U.S. News report is student-to-teacher ratio. Well, okay, that, you know, that argues both ways, right? You know, you can, you can hire more teachers than, and not schedule efficiently, and so then that moves you up in the U.S. News listing. So, but in any event, that's the best we can do. I think the point is, as long as we are moving forward, and as long as we're trying to outperform and out-instruct and outlearn towns with roughly the same resources, that's not a bad place at least to start. I don't think it's the end necessarily, but it's at least a decent place to start.
I think one of the biggest benefits, too, is to say, okay, what is reasonable, and what can we learn from each other? So that if we see a town that's performing really, really well, then we can have conversations with them and say, how did you do this? Can we learn from one another? Can we, you know, study and figure out? And so, you know, anytime you have relative data, it's really about what is reasonable, and can we look at it and learn from each other? And so that, that's my favorite part of, you know, doing any kind of comparative data.
Any other questions, any other thoughts about this?
All right, I, I think, I think that was helpful.
I think it was. And I'm sorry, we couldn't be more clear than that.
It is what it is.
And that concludes our report.
Well, can you just update us on where you are on the, on the meetings at the various schools with the Common Core? I know you've done a couple.
Two, we'd be happy to. So far, in the cycle of meetings where we are looking to listen to parents and community members about questions and observations that they have around last year, our first year of full implementation, we had a meeting at Cox Elementary School, and we had a meeting at Jones. In both cases, I'm pleased to say that we had multiple teachers, four or six teachers from each school community who chose to come out and be part of the conversation, to be there as resources and to listen. And in each case, we had approximately half a dozen parents who came out to share questions or observations. And what was exciting is that in each case, they turned into really small intimate conversations that took 90 minutes or two hours, and the people who chose to come to those conversations got lots of attention and got to ask questions of teachers and hear from teachers. Teachers got to hear observations and respond to those. And so it wasn't a full evening of Dr. Keen and me speaking, it was a comfortable conversation in both of those settings. I want to thank Mr. Augustine and Mrs. McCarthy for hosting those. We've got more meetings coming up. We'll be meeting at both Lakes and Leet as well, in similar settings. We have a meeting that will combine our two middle school bodies, and we have one scheduled at the high school, I believe, into December. Also worth noting that there are also a series of math nights that are happening. I know at least one of our elementary schools, I believe, hosted a math night already, or is it coming up soon?
I'm not sure.
Each math night, each elementary school has scheduled a math night where teachers and students will be available to talk about the new math resources that are available in the school, and to talk about resources that are available to parents. That'll be happening at each of our four elementaries, and I know those dates are available on our website. We also have follow-up meetings where each elementary PTO has scheduled an evening to talk about, how can I help my child with homework? And it is specific around math. So an evening of presentation on the topic, an evening of hands-on exploring, and then an evening of conversation among parents. Ms. Carrery, Mrs. Carrery has shared those dates by letter to all of the parents K through five in the school system, and with all of you, the board members, the dates are shared on our website. And the letter also highlighted additional electronic materials, reference materials that are available for parents. So when we have talked about unit letters that go home to parents explaining the focus of the unit and the work to be done, those letters will be available on the website, as well as sent home to parents through their classroom teachers, and there are some additional resources on the website as well. The last note, and it's far into the future, but the letter also highlighted that in May, we are doing a collaborative math event with Madison. We have invited a guest speaker. We've shared his website and access to his materials, and Madison and Guilford communities together will be talking about math and math in the home, and how we in the schools and parents at home can best support students in their mathematical studies. And he's a lot of fun. So that's a night that, Greg Tang, and that's a night that we're looking forward to.
When is it?
May.
It's in May, and that date is also available on our website and sent by letter home to at least all parents K through five. A lot of conversation going on, and it's been really helpful conversation.
Okay, great. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. And board agenda, 9.1, we've already done. 9.2, I understand, we're not ready to move forward with tonight, is that correct?
Yes, I can update the board simply to say that at this time, the custodial group has ratified the draft version of the contract, but we do not have a finalized corrected version with signature, and so we will hold that for your adoption until the December meeting. We simply want to have the correct document with the custodial signatures before we bring it to you for approval.
Okay. And 9.3, on the other hand, is receive for possible action ratification of the food service employees' contract. I had nothing to do with that negotiating committee. Who was on that committee?
Barbara, Sue, and I were on the committee.
Can one of you summarize where we are?
I was not at the last meeting, so I might not be the best person. The, I can say that one of the things, oh, perfect, one of the things that was terrific about this process was that there was just a lot of kind of languaging tightening up that was able to happen. I know Mr. Bowden worked very hard to do that. The specifics of the contract, it is a two-year contract, so will go through June 30th, 2016. Salary increases at 2% in each of the two contract years. New hires will be paid as follows, so there's some changes here. Date of hire, 80% of the classification wage rate. Successful completion of the probationary period, 90% of the classification rate. After one year of service, 100% of the classification wage rate. Couple other changes, mandatory direct deposit for all employees. The insurance premium cost share for 2014, starting July, employee pays 14%, and the Board of Ed pays 86%. Currently, it was 13. And then, starting July 1st, 2015, employee pays 15%, and the Board of Ed pays 85%. Lastly, uniform allowance was increased to 225 for shirts, pants, and shoes.
Important to note that this group is insured through their association, not through the school system.
That's right, that's an important distinction.
Do we have a copy of the contract?
It went out to all of us.
You went out on Friday.
I believe you received two copies, one with tracked changes from the previous contract, and one clean copy, whichever you prefer to read.
Separated from the agenda, okay.
Yeah, yes. It was right after.
About five minutes later.
Yeah, came out separate.
I just think it was a very good process. It was give and take on both sides. There was very good faith bargaining that went on, and I think everybody felt satisfied that both sides had been well represented, and that we had done a good job of representing both sides, listening to them, them listening to us. It was really a good process.
I would like to thank the members of the food service group who served on their committee. They were very open and collaborative. I would very much like to appreciate the board members who put so much time and effort into it, and I do want to acknowledge Mrs. Trudeau and Mr. Bowden, who structured and ran a very productive process.
They're extremely helpful.
Yes.
Okay, is that, is that a motion that we approve this contract?
It is a motion that we approve this contract. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, well, with our thanks to the members of the committee, that, I know this is a, this is, this is part of the board's work that maybe doesn't get quite the attention of some of the things that we do. On the other hand, it's no less important, and it's always good to come to a reasonable agreement, especially with, I saw some of these language changes, I think, and tightening up is fabulous. It's going to save interpretation issues.
Absolutely. I mean, many of the language changes were related to simple things like, instead of talking about working, business days, talking about calendar days, so that there was an, you know, there's a kind of a, an easy steadfast way to count things, and, you know, snow days, or vacation days, or other things, didn't, didn't kind of mess things up. But it was, I agree with Barbara, it was a, I believe it was a good back and forth. There were a number of food service members that were present at a lot of the meetings, which was, you know, terrific as well.
I also want to note, and this goes a little further afield, but Mr. Bowden's work in that the board will begin to see more consistency of language across contracts. And I think that is very important and can't be underestimated, that the consistency of language just goes to ease of administration and ease of communication, and will improve just a number of areas. And so again, having him in that office to sort of be the spear point on these as we've now gone through, I think, five contracts with Mr. Bowden on board, you'll begin to see more consistency in language as we move forward.
Just proves why we needed an HR person on board. There's so many reasons that are coming up.
And the right HR person.
And the right HR person, yes.
Well, and the other advantage of these language changes is that from the employee's point of view, things are much clearer. I mean, before, where things were defined differently in one agreement than from another, employees obviously talk to each other, and they say, well, you know, how come this?
Right.
Why do you do that differently? And to the extent that we can make this stuff easier to understand by having uniform definitions, I think we're going to be better off all around.
Right, good. All right, thank you. 9.4 is to act on establishment of a curriculum, instruction, and assessment committee. This came out of a retreat, I think, that we did last year?
I mean, I-
Summer, this summer? That we have a dedicated committee to review instruction, curriculum, and assessment issues. By board, by, under board policy, we, only the board can create a permanent committee. We've already actually met, at least as an ad hoc group, as a full board committee. And I think there, I think there's unanimity that we think a formation of this committee is a good thing, and that, that at least in the short term, we will act as a committee of the whole until we kind of figure out our, get our- a committee of the whole until we kind of figure out our, get our feet under us, and then we'll, I think, we'll figure out a different, a different model, and then we can start developing agendas and move forward. So, is there a motion to establish as a standing board committee, the curriculum instruction and assessment committee?
I moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Okay. And I will get something out, appointing members of that committee, but for the interim, it's going to be everybody. It's going to be committee of the whole, and then we will, we will move forward and pare it down, I think, as we, as we start to develop our routine and agendas. Nine point five is to receive for possible action the 2015-16 school calendar draft. Now, this is the one that Dr. Freeman presented to us, I think, almost a year ago, right?
If there is any change in this calendar, it is minor. There may have been some movement in some individual items to be more in alignment with the regional template. This is the last year in which the regional calendar is still considered a template. Next year, there are more requirements that we align more closely to the regional calendar. That works well for us, because this calendar was shared with you a year ago. It was part of a two-year package. The calendar year in which we sit today was designed to have the school year end as early in June as possible. Without weather additions, that calendar is set to have us out of school on June 12th. This calendar is paired with that by pushing our start date later into September, in fact, after Labor Day. The logic around that is to afford us the largest summer possible to complete high school construction, abatement and demolition of a significant portion of this building in which we sit, and the move of materials from this building into the new high school. So, this calendar has the first student day of school happening on September 8th, with the last student day of school falling on Monday, June 20th, barring weather. That allows us up to eight days by statute that we could make up should there be weather impacts or other impacts for closing school next year. Statutorily, we must close school in the month of June. We cannot have students in during the month of July, and we must make our 180 days before July 1. So, you'll see some things that are unusual. You'll see professional development front-loaded, so that we have staff in earlier. That works well at the high school, as they'll be coming into a new building and learning new facility and setting up new workspaces. It's not optimum or ideal for the rest of the districts to have all of your workdays loaded into the front. You'll note that we do have another professional development day held in March. The vacations tend to fall where they would annually fall, and this calendar continues to recognize Veterans Day as a holiday. I did not intend by sparking the conversation to happen today that we would be then asking you to approve a calendar. You understand that it takes a year to prepare and approve a calendar, so I want to be really clear for the community that's watching, that we began a conversation about whether or not we should have students in schools on Veterans Day. I expect to continue that conversation between now and this time next year, where I bring you a proposed calendar for school year 1617, where we will talk about that opportunity. I had no intention, and I have no request, that you change the way that we address Veterans Day in this calendar that's presented to you today.
Can I ask a question? What happens if we have a particularly difficult winter? I mean, if school is, under this calendar, school is supposed to be out on, what, the 21st of June? So, that gives us-
Eight days.
Eight calendar days, but how many school days?
No, eight.
It's eight school days. It gives us-
Twentieth, out on the 20th, eight school days.
Now, now-
Look at the calendar. It's eight school days.
Okay. Should we have another year like the blizzard, where we had double digits of canceled school days, the first strategy is that we begin to take days off of and out of April vacation. We have the ability to petition the Commissioner of Education for an exemption to the 180-day requirement, but the standard course of events is that you put them on the end, you then begin taking them out of April vacation, and I have never known a Commissioner of Education to waive the 180-day requirement due to weather-related occurrences.
But we can't go into July?
By statute, you're not allowed to hold school on Saturdays or in July.
When is it, like, the latest time that you can get the calendar and have everything planned for the next year? I mean, now, early is always better, I guess, but-
Yeah. There's no pressure for the board to approve the calendar tonight. We are, however, already receiving phone calls from families who want to know. Ideally, I would prefer a cycle where we approve calendars around this time of year in two-year increments, so that we can let our community know well in advance, and families and staff members can plan vacations and time away from district. There's no rush to approve this calendar tonight.
I understand that you're not necessarily proposing a change in Veterans Day for next year, but on the other hand, why not? I mean, could we figure that out in the next, you know, month or two? I mean, when I look at the calendar, one thing that stands out is that you have the last day of school on a Monday.
On a Monday.
The other thing is that, you know, in September, there's Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, and then Columbus Day in October, and Veterans Day, and then Thanksgiving. So, it's just, you know, we've experienced this, this fall. It just, with our kids, it just seems like every day we turn around, "Oh, wait, they're not going to school today," and, you know.
Right.
So, to have a full week, you know, along with some of the comments that people have made about incorporating Veterans Day, I just wondered, do we really have to wait two years to do that, if that's the right thing, or could we figure that out?
So, anticipating that question, there were a number of days that, that we could sort of highlight for conversation. Veterans Day would be one, but I think we heard tonight some of the emotion and sensitivity around it, and so, could we have a conversation between now and your first meeting in December and have a better idea? Possibly, but I'd be, I'd be hesitant to rush that. It is unusual to have two Jewish holidays that fall in September, because often one falls on a weekend, and when that happens, we don't recognize it with a Monday or Friday observation, but in this year, both fall during the midweek schedule. We also talked about November 25th, which is not a holiday in any way, but has historically in Guilford been recognized with a day off. It allows consideration to families.
Not two historically.
Yes, it's probably four or five.
There's history, and then there's history. It's a little short of 375.
It's very nice, I must say.
It is nice, but it's, I think it was Dr. Porcella's idea.
But it's, yes.
It's convenient, but it is, it's a day that could be discussed. We also talked about the idea, the idea of holding professional development for staff members on November 11th, but allowing students to be off, which we have done in the past in the school system. The real issue for us is we would have no professional development beyond November, and I really worry about having all of the professional days so front-loaded. And so, we've looked at a number of those options, and while I knew that we might have conversation about some of those options, I was not confident building any of those options into this calendar, but I did anticipate that any of those might be days that, that came up in conversation.
Maybe we could spend a couple of minutes talking about this at the workshop meeting?
Yeah.
And then see, right? And kind of see, give people a chance to think about it, and maybe survey your friends, or whatever it happens to be. I mean, I'm pretty ambivalent about the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, frankly. I just assume, I understand it's probably not the most productive day in the, in the learning cycle, but on the other hand, it's, it's getting pretty late in the year if you're on the 21st.
Well-
If you look at this calendar, also the, the winter holidays, New Year's and Christmas are falling in kind of the one week, as opposed to the two weeks. Like, I mean-
Yes.
Actually, the 20th, you know, like, the 23rd, the Wednesday before that holiday would be, I don't know, might give people more of a chance to take some time.
That's an equivalent.
There are other things we could talk about, but yeah, it's, I mean, I think-
Yeah, let's do that. Why don't we just put that on the workshop agenda for a couple minutes?
I think that's great. We actually didn't anticipate approval tonight.
No.
And I will only note that we had all the same conversations about how late the 20th is, and that it's a Monday hanging out there, but with eight days of snow days, it's actually a fairly safe number. We, we got very close to July the year that we had the blizzard. I'm, I'm not going to suggest that anything is, is complete insulation, but eight's a pretty reasonable number. So, we, we sort of came around to the idea that we keep as much as we can, the way we've been doing it recently, with the exception of a late start and a late end. And again, if, if things work in our favor, and we get out in, on July 12th, or the early teens this year, it will work very well for the move into the new high school.
He did that just to see if we were listening.
Just to see if we were listening.
When we talk about the year after 2016, I would like to have us have a discussion about Election Day. That will be a presidential election day. Usually means a high turnout, and four of the five polling places in Guilford are schools. Somebody who spent a lot of time at the polls last week, it can be pretty risky, parking and traffic, and if there are students getting on and off buses, it does mean that the town provides a police car at each polling booth, which is expense, not to us, but to the town. So, I think we ought to consider whether Election Day should be, if not a school holiday, then a teacher development day, and the students are off.
Talking about for two years from now?
16, yeah. 2016.
Thank you for that reminder. I did, I meant to mention that, and I appreciate the reminder.
All right. So, let's carry this over to the workshop agenda, and also maybe put it on the, on the December full board agenda as well.
Good.
All right. Okay. Nine point seven is to act on two, some recommendations from the policy committee regarding high school graduation requirements.
Do we need to do nine, excuse me, Mr. Boss, do we need to do nine points six?
Nine point six is simply, yeah, it simply pairs to the school calendar.
Yeah, I think we just carry that over.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. That's all.
Shows you where your meetings will fall, and doesn't really need to be discussed until we discuss the school calendar.
Great.
I'm not planning my 2015 Monday nights quite yet, so I'm-
Okay. So, this is a policy in a reg that was presented to the board in October as a receive item. This is now being presented for, as an act on item, revisions to policy 6310, graduation requirements. Again, a reminder about what this is about. This is a proposal brought to us by the high school administration to increase the requirement for graduation credits from 22 credits, where it is presently, to 25. It comes not only with that recommendation, but with a very detailed list of where these credits should be earned, certainly with some option for electives, as is the case now, but with a cluster of credits in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, eight credits; in humanities, 11 credits; in career and life skills, four credits. In addition, it increases the community service graduation requirement from 20 hours to 30 hours. So, the language in both the policy and the regulation reflect the requests, again, for the increased credits, identifying where those credit requirements will be required, and the increase in community service hours.
I ask just, I mean, you know, if we discussed the going from 22 to 25 last meeting, as far as how many would be completing that as of now.
Right.
But just looking a little more closely at the, the clusters and the credits in each, you know, it seems to me that it might actually be limiting for some people, you're basically really prescribing 23 credits that they have to take in certain specific areas, right? And then they have two credits to get electives, to get to 25, and, you know, some of the, I mean, four credits in the career and life skills, I could see that being, you know, possibly helpful, but also potentially taking away from kids who might want to take more core academic subjects rather than the career and life skills. I guess I'm just wondering, along the same lines as we discussed last time, how many kids would fulfill this now?
Right.
And why are we so concerned with prescribing exactly what credits they need to take in areas outside of the core academics?
So, I'm going to try to answer this. I'm going to acknowledge that our high school assistant principal, Julie Chaff, is in the audience, and I welcome her to correct me or add to my comments. Sounds like there were a couple of questions in there, so I'll try to answer all of them. At the, the most recent data, graduating class of 2013, 92% of our graduates graduated with 24 credits or greater, and 74% graduated with 26 credits or greater. So, I recognize that this is a proposal for 25, and it kind of falls in the middle there. The expectation, again, is that a good majority of the students are already reaching 25 credits. Not to invalidate the importance of, for some kids of a study hall, there is an opportunity, I believe, to get close to 28 credits, I'm sorry, 32 credits, if someone wanted to try to do that. And I say there's, there's some, and I only know this from personal experience, there are some, you know, AP Bio is a credit and a half for two periods if you have a lab, so there's some movement there. But I don't think there's an expectation that this requirement is going to prevent anyone from taking additional courses in subject areas to which they are passionate.
Ms. Chaff, can you just join us up here? I think it'd be helpful if you could maybe-
Right. But instead, really kind of tackle some of the kind of college readiness that we would really like to see our, our students have. And comes, I think-
Do you want to sit down and say a little bit?
Sure.
Goodness.
Comes with some recognition that we also expect, over the next couple of years, some kind of state-level commentary on this as well. But do you have anything to add to that?
I think that there is more definition there in terms of how some of the electives are categorized, but if you look at the STEM elective, for example, that could be fulfilled with an additional math course, for example. There is, if you look at the listing under the career and life skills, I think that there's a lot of flexibility built into that list, including the opportunity for independent study, as well as capstone projects, both of which are currently happening in our school. And I think that Ms. Bellistraci is correct in stating that, you know, our students are sort of doing this already with a 22-credit graduation requirement. What we're trying to do is to be more in line with the college and career readiness expectations that are laid out by the Common Core State Standards, as well as the recommendations that the state is making moving forward.
If you look at the language itself, there's a lot of cross-fertilization, where what you would consider to be core courses, the STEM courses show up in Cluster 1 and show up in Cluster 3. So, world languages show up both in Cluster 2 and Cluster 3. So, I don't think there's any limitation, if you want to exercise your electives, in, you know, what might traditionally be considered core courses. But the emphasis for developing clusters and the language around clusters was, came down from the state, and that's really sort of their language to cluster them.
Other questions? We, I think we asked a question last month about whether there was likely to be any staffing impact from, from this. Have you been able to review that?
Yes. So, we met further with high school administration. We are anticipating that, and in some ways, it's difficult to tease out one, one cause from another, but we are anticipating that there will be a request for increasing staffing at the high school this year of between one and two FTEs. Some of that is related to the graduation requirements, as they impact the freshman class only. Some of that is related to some in-house scheduling challenge that was surfaced this year, and wanting to be able to cover math classes, for instance, and have those classes fall where we need them to fall in the schedule, not necessarily to address class size, but to address scheduling and flexibility concerns. Some of that is in response- Some of that is in response to just, just looking at the schedule and, and looking at some of the, the reductions that have been made in the last two or three years. All of that is not a result of the credit change, but it does go to answer whether or not there's going to be a, a, any significant budget impact as a result of this credit change. And then, as we project this through the high school moving forward, again, we're beginning with this class as it comes in, and there will be, each year, building up an additional year of credit requirement. That actually aligns with some slight enrollment reduction that we anticipate to see at the high school. We've looked carefully at the scheduling, and we don't anticipate large impacts as a result of this policy decision moving forward. We'll have more conversation at your next meeting this month about whether there will be staffing implications as a result of bringing IB in as an option at the high school. That would not happen this year. IB classes would not be offered this coming year in any case, and so it doesn't have any bearing on the one to two FTEs, and we need to continue to do, you know, some refining of that. Mr. Bowden has been working really closely with Mrs. Chaff on scheduling at the high school and looking at some different options moving forward.
Is it one FTE roughly for the, the graduation credit change this year, or is it one additional one each of the next four years?
I don't think it's...
See what I'm saying?
I don't think it falls out.
In other words, is this a cumulative thing, given that the, the freshmen are just enrolling now in the fall in, in the high school? Are you going to have to add an four, in other words, over the next four years?
No, I don't think, I don't think it's a full FTE. If, if the only thing that we were trying to address was the credit change only...
Yeah, let's, let's just say that's the only issue.
Then, no. It will not compound annually and be a total of four over four years. It's more of an initial investment that I think needs to be made, and then the rest of it will sort of fall out. It's not a particularly burdensome FTE impact in this credit, in this policy change.
No, it is, it's just, we'd like to make sure that there isn't a, a, more than we anticipated.
And the simplest logic around that is that so many of our students are already achieving this credit level. It's really more about where we're placing them than what we're asking them to, to accommodate. And I think, I think to Dr. Moore's question, I think the restrictions and placement are more challenging for the schedule of the high school and where we place our staff than it is for a student making elective decisions moving through.
And as is being alluded to, but just to clarify for the television viewing audience, this, of course, would start as a requirement for incoming freshmen next year, so that present freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and certainly seniors are still having to, to reach for at least the 22 mark. Correct. And not necessarily beyond that.
That's correct.
So, was the discussion at the committee level about, you know, if most kids are already doing this?
Yes.
So, that's not going to be an issue for them, you know, for the, for the overwhelming majority of kids? But, how about the kids that aren't already doing it? Is, is it likely to need additional supports for them? Is there, what, what about that coterie, if you will, that cohort? What, what anticipation do we have as to what, how that group might be able to comply with this new requirement?
So, I'll start off, and I'll, again, let Ms. Chaff finish up. So, part of that group is, in fact, seniors who, and sometimes juniors, but seniors who are taking a couple extra study halls. I mean, it's kind of, you know, may do that for a job, may do that for other opportunities, so that, so that there aren't necessarily challenges to, to them academically to get this done, not necessarily, you know, difficulty in completing courses. There is, of course, a group, and I know Jason Scanziano was very much part of these conversations, a group of kids for whom this may be a little bit more of a challenge. And to that, I'll, I'll let Julia speak a little more, because that was a concern. What do we do, what about that, right, that percentage of kids who have not, at least historically, reached that level? If I may say too, one of the things that's interesting about the chart, I noted, again, 92% of kids graduating 2013, 24 credits or greater, 74%, 26 credits or greater. These have grown really, really quickly in four years. So, in 2010, those same numbers were 87% and 58%. So, that we've seen in four years a real trend upwards in the number of credits these kids are, are completing.
Yes.
But, back to your, to the question, really about what about some of these kids?
Well, one of the things that, when we met with Mr. Scanziano, and we were looking at the progression, which I, I don't remember if it's on the second or third page of the proposal, but...
Right.
If you look at the progression of credits earned to get to, from ninth grade to 10th grade and so forth, the first two years is six and six, I believe. Is that correct?
Currently, five and, five and six, I think.
Five and six. And the reason why it was structured that way was, if you look at our, if you look at the, the high school progression of that cohort, as you use the term cohort, they often, by the time are in their 11th grade year, have sort of pulled everything together and are able to have maturity at that point, have the motivation at that point to move forward with getting to graduation. And so, there's a little bit of a cushion in that freshman and sophomore year. If a student is struggling or is having trouble with the transition into high school, we do have a small number of students who have that kind of experience when they first come in, but we're finding by the time they're in, they're at the junior level, they're able to recoup that. And, you know, even if you look at our alternative ed program right now, and those would sort of be the students who have had the most issues, not with academics per se, but with truancy typically, they are able to, with the right supports in place, junior and senior year, recoup and attend school and graduate. Would it be harder for a student in that situation? Perhaps. But, I think that our, our kids are demonstrating that they're able to do this well, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not that concerned about it.
Yeah, I sort of feel, Mr. Boss, as if those supports have been put in place over the last couple of years. If you had asked that question two, three years ago, I might have said yes, but with two different support programs in place at the high school now that didn't exist two years ago, I do feel that those supports are in place now. We also have credit recovery opportunities for students that can fall outside the school day or the school year, some of which are offered through E-Race, which we mentioned earlier. So, we, we do have ancillary supports in place to help students meet these expectations.
There's flexibility in the policy itself, the PPT. Any student who has a PPT, that can be adjusted if appropriate for that student.
There is, there is, there are an allowance for kids who, who really are not expected to find this something they can accomplish.
This exceeds present state mandates? This would exceed present state.
Yes.
Why don't we, we're going to, I'm advised that we're almost out of tape, so we'll take a short break.
And I wasn't talking like that.
No, that's why I didn't want to start.
Because it used to be Mr. Ireland, but lately it's been me.